Good afternoon, everyone. We're just waiting a couple of minutes for participants to join the webinar and we'll get started shortly. Thank you for being here. Okay, good afternoon and welcome. We're going to go ahead and get started. My name is Christina Walks Harper. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for People and Community Services. Welcome to our parent town hall. We wanted to have an opportunity to provide some updates from the different district departments and divisions. And we're going to get started with our superintendent, Mr. Richard Martinez. For welcome, I'm sorry, just before Mr. Martinez. Mrs. Raimundo, our director for people and community services, would you please share in Spanish regarding translation? Thank you.
Buenas tardes a todos los padres compartiendo la junta con nosotros hoy. Queremos avisarles que tenemos traducción. Está en el sitio abajo donde dice interpretación. Gracias, oprime ese botón y pueden tener la traducción en español.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Just want to double check, do we know if any board members may be on the Zoom call?
I don't see any at this time. Sony, you don't see another, an additional screen with names, correct?
Very good. Thank you very much. Just want to make sure, feel free to, to, to stop me if Dr. Proman or Mr. Guzman or any other board member does show up. So thank you very much. My name is Richard Martinez, Superintendent Schools. I appreciate your time. I know it is somewhat of a sacrifice for many reasons. My understanding is the Dodgers are playing right now. The update for you to know, not that I always aware, but the, I believe it's 15 to one. And I know many of your parents are watching the game at the same time watching us. So I appreciate that you put us on as a priority, just as well as sports. So again, we're joining you for an update. We want to present an update to you of the organization promoting Unified School District. Again, I'm so appreciative of you, our partnership that we have with our parents, with our children, with our teachers, with our site administrators. Together, we could ensure that our kids are successful, our students are unified. I continue to believe that as a community, we continue serving all our students very well, even during the pandemic. In some cases, we will find other opportunities to improve that type of care, such as tutoring and those services, we'll talk about a bit later. I believe Mrs. Fuentes will talk to us about that. Thank you for advocating parents, for neighbors, for friends, for those contacts that you have close to you when it comes to education. Again, I encourage you, if you know of someone in your apartment building, in the hotel area that you work, that you live in your residential area. If you know that someone's not connecting or engaged in their studies, help them by contacting the school that they attend. Talk to their principal, talk to their counselor, or talk to their teacher, or encourage them to do that. Remember that the following services do exist for you and you can call any of our school sites for them or the district office. For counseling services for your family, for referrals for counseling for your children, we do have therapists and counselors that are part of Pomona Unified School District. Any basic needs that you have, food, clothing, even temporary shelter for housing, we can help direct you to the best resources and support you in that area. Tutoring services and mentoring services are available and I'm sure based on all the programming that you'll hear about later on, some of those services may be right close to your home. If you still like to reach out to learn about your children's progress, keep in mind that this week, and you probably know this because you're already talking to your child's teacher. It is parent teacher conference week and you'll be able to talk to your elementary school teachers. Again, if you don't connect for some reason with your teacher, your child's teacher, you could set up an appointment with your child's counselor, with the administrator by contacting the school. It's always better to be connected and don't, don't think that you're bothered or that no one's going to respond to you. If they don't, just continue trying and you could work with the principal if you're not having any luck with the teacher. Sometimes we're working remotely and it's not always, we're not able to connect with you right away. So my hope is that you'll stay connected with the folks at your school. So the reports you're hearing that LA County, we're doing better with COVID-19. So the positivity rates are going down, including Pomona, which is really good news. And we're hearing the same thing as an entire state. We're doing really well. And so that just doesn't happen because the season has changed. It really happens because there's responsible behavior that's happening around us and in our homes. So I urge you, I plead with you, continue wearing mask. Make sure you're washing your hands frequently, social distancing of six feet. Keep your groups small. And I know that the rules changed a little bit last Friday. The county of Los Angeles allows up to three households to come together. I would just say be very careful in the houses that you're selecting. Probably best to keep it with your close, close family, your theos and vías, your abuelitos. Those are nice places to start, but no more than three homes coming together as a, for any type of fiesta because we're coming to the holiday season. And I know we all want to be together with large families and under my family, when we have a small gathering, it could be 65 to 80 people. Or a big family, 15 brothers and sisters. So I think some of you might relate to that. But we're asking you just, you could do that on FaceTime, you could do that on Zoom, bringing your big groups together. But try to make those groups small because we want to ensure that our kids will be safe when they do have an opportunity to return and if they're going to be healthy, ready to return. Currently, we're surveying our parents and you may have already seen the survey. I made a comment on Monday during the parent meeting that the surveys went out Friday. The reality is that they were ready to, they were on our website, but we not, we didn't send it out to your homes. But on Monday, I believe they were sent to your homes for you to do. And that's, that survey is really to get a better understanding on where you are with returning your children to school, with reopening schools. It's going to help us make decisions in the near future, once the county allows us to return in a hybrid fashion. And when I say a hybrid fashion, that means in a reduced week, that also means with smaller groups at a time. And it's going to be a staggered opening. It's going to be probably with our TK, K1 and 2 kids. Because that's what's being recommended by the county department of public health. So those are things that we will be considering. And that depends on the survey from our parents, the responses that we receive, also the responses that we receive from our staff. We're surveying our teachers this week. We'll also serve our classified and our administration here in the next week. As we gather this information and as we move into another tier by the county, where our hope is that we can come back to the unions and to our Board of Education and ultimately talk to you about this based on the survey results on what we're going to do next and let you know when that's going to happen. I know many of our parents are asking, so is this the meeting, Mr. Martinez, that you're going to tell us when it's going to be? It's too early to tell you that. Again, we're gathering information. The county hasn't moved this over. So I can't give you an exact date on when that, that is. I just wanted to let you know that it will be a staggered opening with the younger ones first. Because that's what's being recommended by the Department of Public Health. So again, I encourage you to take the survey. We want as many parents to do this as possible. The last time we did this, I believe it was 12,000 parents that responded. And that's of our 23,000 students. That's pretty significant. That's the biggest return we've ever received on any survey, any survey we did before that. So my hope is we're going to have that same number, if not higher, because we really want to get a good feel on where you are with your thinking of reopening schools at this point. So again, thank you for joining us. I'm keeping my comments brief because there's a lot to be presented tonight by staff. And then you'll have an opportunity to ask questions and we'll be able to respond to those. Again, have a good evening. I will be on the call throughout the meeting and I believe Christina Walks Harper, Dr. Walks Harper, it's yours once again.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Just to share with you briefly regarding the protocols, we'll hear from the different departments. If you have questions as we go along, please place those in the Q and A stream that is available. We have staff monitoring that stream. And then once we complete the presentations, I will share the questions with our panelists so that we can provide the best and most up-to-date information. So again, we will respond to questions at the end of the presentations. And that is also because many times your questions are answered during the presentation. So we want to make sure that we cover all of the information ahead of time. Before we go to business services, I'm going to turn it over to our board member, Dr. Alberta Proman. Thank you for joining us. And if you'd like to share a few words, Dr. Proman.
Thank you so much, Dr. Walks Harper. So first of all, welcome to everyone. This is a very unusual and stressful time and it just, I, I've said it a few times over the last few days and I have, I'm, I'm saying it again because I have to convince myself of it. But this is just temporary. This is not something we're going to be going through forever. It's just a temporary thing. So, so I, I, please remind your children of that, that they'll be back in school at some point and, and this will be behind us. But, but there may be some changes, you know, that, that, that stay, but, but, but it'll go back to basically normal. So, so just, the kids have to understand that. It's hard enough for adults to keep it in our hearts. So I, you can imagine how difficult it is for children. So, so, and also just on behalf of the school board, we're here to support you. So this is a difficult time. We're all going through this together. We're learning as we go. And so thank you for your patience as we, as we, as we find our way through this. And please let us know how we can support you in any way with your children. It's very stressful for the children. And so, so let us know. And they may not express it, but, but it's stressful. Any, any big change like this is very stressful. So just let us know how we can support you. To that end, let me just mention Homework Club because I feel sometimes like I was put on the earth to do that. But anyway, um, we, the Pomona Public Library Foundation sponsoring Homework Club, it's all virtual now. It's all online. And the library is closed now, of course, but, but we've been, we've been addressing a lot of the needs of the children, the academic needs. And also, it's also a mentoring program. So it's really nice because they get to meet college students. Again, online, of course, but, but we, I'll put the, I'll share the, the information in the chat so you can register. But my suggestion is if you have an elementary or middle school child, then, then register. And then any day, Monday through Thursday, 3:30 to 6 o'clock, the school is in session, the children can come in and get help with their homework. Try not to get into it with them because they're stressed out and we're stressed out and, and you know, so those things never create a, a good dynamic. So, so please let our college tutors help you with that. They are all fingerprinted. They're all vetted by the police department. So you don't have to worry who's on helping your child. All Cal Poly students, Pitzer, Pomona College and Western University students helping and a few retirees, community retirees, one being my sister. But anyway, so, so please, please bring your child if they need help. And also just to mention, Sky Schools is doing a Sky Club for our secondary students. And so to help them with mindfulness and relaxation, learning how to breathe when they're, when they're stressed out. And, and, and again, as I say a lot, because I love this visual thinking about how in a storm can you find the place of calm or the eye of the storm? And there's a place in your mind that can go there. We just have to find it. So thank you all for attending this meeting. And please let us know how we can support you in any way. We're the center, the school district is the center of your community. Please, please know that and, and feel comfortable coming to us for help. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Proman. At this time, we'll start with our Business Services Division. Mr. Daryl Hickey, who is our Director for Food and Nutrition Services, has an update. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to start off with an update to kind of share where we've been and where we're going. We started on March 17th during, during the curbside pickup and Food and Nutrition Services staff has been at the curb ever since. Myself and the staff, we've been out there in the rain and in the cold, the scorching summer heat, taking refuge under the easy ups during the, the falling ash from the fires that were happening a few weeks ago. But just be rest assured that myself and the staff recognize that it's essential that our families are taken care of with food for their children and will continue to do so. I wanted to share some numbers so you can kind of see what Food Services is doing. Since the beginning of curbside pickup, we made sure that families reserve, receive fresh milk, fruits and vegetables with a variety of breakfast and lunch entrees. And even in the beginning, when there were shortages of milk and fruit in the stores, we made sure to have that available. And we'll continue to. Since March, we've served over 405,600 children, each receiving a breakfast and a lunch totaling 811,000 meals. To get a better understanding of how many children that 405,000 is, imagine a large school bus and we filled up that school bus with all of the, the children. It would take 4,182 school buses. And I thought, does that still sound like a lot? If you park them end to end on the freeway, that line of buses would run 33 miles long. So again, if you're still thinking, oh, it's not too long. If you got on the freeway at the first bus and got in your car and got up to 60 miles an hour, you'd be driving for over 30 minutes before you get to the end of the line. And the amazing thing is that's what we've done and we're not even done yet. So we continue to do about 3,000 students and, and children of our communities every day, both breakfast and lunch. We have our monthly menus for breakfast and lunch are on our department homepage in English and in Spanish. We've added some fun treats once a week, items that'll include like a brownie bite and a Rice Krispie treat and a cookie. It's always fun to have a treat once in a while. We've also added extra vegetables to the lunch menu. We started to rotate different fruits into the menu as the, as the seasons change. So right now plums are in season. So we'll start offering that. So throughout the year, you'll see things transition in. Again, we continue to offer fresh fruits and vegetables and milk daily. So we get, excuse me, fresh deliveries throughout the week. And so we want to make sure that all of our, all of our children that we, we serve are getting the freshest, best quality products that are out there. One thing that we started to offer new and it's exciting to share on this past Friday, we're now distributing extra breakfast items to families for Saturdays. So on Fridays, your child will get a breakfast and a lunch, and then you'll also get items for breakfast for Saturday. So we're excited about that and we'll continue that on indefinitely right now. As we move closer to Thanksgiving holiday, we're looking to distribute extra items as they become available. And just a reminder that children 18 and under are eligible for our meals. They do not have to be a PUSD student or a resident of Pomona, as long as they're 18 and under. Barcodes are still needed for PUSD students. This is a way for us to be able to count those students. If you don't have a barcode, you can check your student's parent connect account to access their, their barcode. And even without a barcode, no one has ever denied a meal. So that'll take care of, if you have, as an example, a student that's in first grade and you have a two-year-old. The two-year-old won't have a barcode, but we can still accommodate the two-year-old as well. We have been asked some questions. So I wanted to address some things that might come up. That came up from the last meeting. We were asked about our menu phone app that we had last school year during the summer. It went through a software and a systems update. And with all that's been going on with COVID, we're looking to do a relaunch in the future, but right now it's on hold. But we, I will share in a minute that we won't have the phone app right this second, but that we have an alternative for you to get that information. Another question I've been asked is, why do I have to pick up food daily and why can't I just pick up food once a week? We just wanted to share that sanitation and safety is vital to our program. And as multiple days are given out, that safety is put at risk. We also have some families with limited storage capacity. And if we, if we were to facilitate multiple days at once, we'd have to limit how many families that we can accommodate. And as our, right now, we, we never run out and we don't, we're not, we don't have to turn anybody away because we always have food available. And then also too, if we, let's say, did a distribute, distribute day on, on a Monday, that for some reason the family couldn't come on that day, then they would be without. So we want to make sure that our daily distribution, it ensures that all families have access any day of the week and that they have the freshest meals available. I'm going to share my screen here. I'm going to take you to our, this is our department homepage. So if you access the PUSD website and then under Departments and Business Services, as I scroll down, it'll be in English and Spanish. And so this is our main information page where we talk about curbside pickup every day, Monday through Friday from 7 to 9:30. And this will show the, the sites. Families can pick up at any location. You, as an example, if your student or the child is, goes to a school that's not listed on here, you can still go to any one of these sites. So if your child goes to, let's say Emerson, but you live near Kellogg, you can go to Kellogg and pick up all the meals. So don't feel that you have to go to that, that site that your student or your child attends. So we have it in English and then we also have it in Spanish. And as you scroll down, we have this available. This is our grab and go breakfast menu and we also have it in Spanish. And you can see we basically have in the, the top here, all of our locations. We also have some grab and go food safety, helpful hints and some reheating items. Since we're serving in the, in the morning, the, all of the items will issue, be issued cold, refrigerated, or some items will be frozen and then designed to heat up so that you can have a hot entree for lunch. We've also made a point where, scroll down here. So that's the English and here's the Spanish. You'll notice that we have listed fruits and vegetables every day. We don't have milk listed on here. However, it's listed down here that every day we do provide milk and it'll be, it'll be a variation of chocolate and white milk. As you scroll down more, you go into the lunch menu. So you can see we have lunch in English and Spanish. I'll reference, we're, we're doing a rotation. So for every four weeks, you won't see a repeating menu entree. You may some, see some things that are similar. You might see two burritos, but they might be different burritos. So our goal is to provide as many different choices as possible throughout the months to make sure that everybody's having an opportunity to, to, to try different things. And then you can see here on Tuesdays, we have our fun items. We have like the brownie bites, the Rice Krispie treats. We don't have anything here on the 27th. However, if you slide down here on the 30th, we have a Jack-o'-lantern cookie. So just something a little bit fun for, for the holidays. So I want to thank you for your time today and we look forward to continue service to your family. And so we want to be here following you. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hickey. Now we'll go to Ed Services, our Ed Services Division, our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Lilith Fuentes. And we also have our Director of Secondary Education, Mrs. Monica Principi.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us today here for our town hall. I wanted to share some of our support services that we have at all our schools. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. So I wanted to talk a little bit about how we're supporting our distance learning for our students. We have been really hearing our parents saying that they need some support. And so our programs are designed for after-school support for our students, but we also have some online programs that can help students during the day if they need some support. Our first thing is we wanted to make sure that we have a strategic plan across our system. And we're following that. We want to make sure that our students are successful and partnering with our community to bring some programs into our, our homes virtually, because it's changed now. And so I wanted to share a little bit about that. Our first thing that I wanted to make sure is that we have, through our Dr. Shown and our teacher specialists, have been providing professional learning for our tutors. We want to make sure that they have the skills to help your students, whether it's on social, emotional, PBIS and trauma responsive. And we wanted to make sure that they are, know exactly what our pro, programs and platforms are in the area of math in elementary and secondary. Also in the area of literacy, science, and all content areas. We also have been working with our tutors in Google Classroom, Zoom and all our distance learning platforms. We bring our National College Research Foundation at the middle and high schools. They are supporting our students in math, language, art, science, and all content area, along with college and mentoring. You know them. They have been working with us for quite a few years, but we've expanded the program to be 100 hours per month at each site for middle and high school. But we need your help. Many times our parents don't know about these programs. If you have a neighbor, if you have students that you know that are struggling or just need some support on a concept they may not have understood, whether it's chemistry, whether it's calculus. They can go to the National College Research Foundation and get support. Please contact your principals, your counselors, and they can give you more information in regards to how to sign up for these services that are after school. Our next one is Middle Tree. Middle Tree is helping 12 of our elementary and high school, K-12, working on all subject areas. We are working with our Middle Tree Monday through Thursday from 2:30 to 6 o'clock. Again, talk to your principal and they can sign you up in regards to join Middle Tree. We have covered every school in the district. So it just depends on the vendor or partner that we're working with that is aligned to your school. But your schools can give you more information. Our next one is Justice for Youth. We are at 17 elementary schools, again, all subject areas. You can make appointments with the tutors. They're there to help our students, help them with homework, help just a connection. Again, I didn't understand this concept. Can you help me? They are available again, Monday through Friday from 2:30 to 6:30. Our next one, and this is something that I know many of you have heard, Bright Prospects, it is our mentoring program that we have used for many years. But we are actually partnering with them in a different area. In middle schools, grade eight, they will be working with our students in the area of math. So if your students need some support in math, please make sure that you contact your, all the middle schools know, have the information. And we're gearing up to start in the next few days. The club, this is a new concept that we are working through. It is in regards to, you may have read about pods, having student ratios of 10 to one in a safe location. This is the old Boys and Girls Club. They are open to support our students during distance learning. And what they do is the student comes in and is able to have a tutor help them as they're guiding to catch up on lessons, homework help, and just the everyday distance learning program that we have. We are limited to 100 students. And so right now, as of this morning, I knew that we are completely full in the 100 spots, but they continue to take names as we look to see how we can expand our program. Our next one is Brothers Forum. This is pending board approval next week. It is to work with our African-American students at Gary, Simons and San Jose. It is a mentoring program on how to ensure that we work with our students in regards to being college-bound. So similar to Bright Prospects, but being very specific to certain schools. Our next one is CYFC, which is our Children's Youth and Family Collaborative. It is elementary to high school. This is a program that we help for our foster youth. It services 200 students across the system and helps them make connections by obtaining, making sure they have hotspots, making sure they know our distance learning practices, that caregivers have the tools necessary to support our students, and also for materials and supplies that they That caregivers have the tools necessary to support our students and also for materials and supplies that they may need as they've transitioned to kinship caregiver caregivers. As Dr. Proman mentioned, Sky Schools, we have launched a different program for our high school students. We've had this at three elementary schools. We also have parent university that we have out here for our parents that can sign up. Also, we have for our staff, Sky Schools. This year for many of our secondary schools, they need some support in building some strategies in regards to coping, coping during this time, coping during homework. As you know, we have nine weeks of of courses of three courses. That could be a lot and you sometimes you're thinking, how am I going to do all this? These strategies can help our students. So these are available at the high school. Please check with your principals and there'll be flyers that we just finished this morning that will be sent out to our students to sign up for this. Again, this is after school and it is to help you manage stress and emotions. We also have services for our advanced placement students. We have over 1900 students taking courses in AP. And as I mentioned, we are on a quarter system per se, which is a nine weeks. And so many students started taking AP classes that now the exams aren't until the spring. But we want to make sure that they don't forget the material that they have learned. This will be pending board approval next week, available to our students 24/7. So for those students that want to do work in the afternoon or late into the night, because we have many, they can access the modules to help them so that they do not forget. They will have the strategies needed. So when they take the test, they're ready. We also wanted to share the regional learning collaborative, which provides tutors to our middle school and is expanding to high school. This gives them tutoring opportunities and really guides them to middle and high school. Our students for, you know, college or other professions. Sometimes students need, you know, college and career, we say. So we want to make sure that they have the support and they are available during the daytime when students need the support during classroom. They can go out into breakout rooms and get those concepts that they need explained a little bit, sometimes a little bit more clearly. Or just, you know, making sure that they go over the information one more time before they go home. Our next one, as Dr. Proman shared, I wanted to share the flyer that she has, which is the Pomona Public Library Foundation presents free tutoring for students in K four, starting Monday, September 16. She is in full play. Again, I want to make sure that you have to register on Tutorfly. It is a platform where you're able to get. Programs or make appointments so that the tutors are there and are available. It is free. All these programs are free. I don't know if many of you saw an article that was profiled in the Los Angeles Times yesterday on the expensive or the cost of tutoring right now. Because of the great need for distance learning runs anywhere between $25 and $100 per hour. And our parents and caregivers, some of them are are signing up for those companies. We have all this for free here in Pomona Unified Schools District. We want to make sure that all our students get the support that they need. Again, what we need your help is making sure you let those neighbors or our students know that these services are available here in our district. We also wanted to talk about avid students, our avid tutors that we also have available. We help our tutors, there's avid schools here in our district, but we have avid tutors that really support our students in organizing themselves. Many times students know their their content, they know what they're doing. But sometimes it's those organizational skills of how to make sure you prioritize, how do you study? Those things that are going to be very important in college or in life, just in, you know, making sure you're paying your bills or, you know. I always, as a former principal, I used to tell my my parents, do you want to make sure we give our students these skills? Because we don't want them living with us when they're 30. We want to make sure they're ready for school, ready for the world, for the world. So avid students bring a lot to to our students and to our schools. We also wanted to ensure that we remember that we have footsteps to brilliance, which is a program for our preschool to third graders. Sometimes some of our students aren't attending preschool right now because of distance learning. Know that these platforms are available for our students to have stories read to them, learn the ABCs, learn phonics, learn. And and it is in English and Spanish, so students can get literacy. Remember, we want all students reading by third grade. We we want to make sure that it's third grade for content. A lot of times people ask me, but don't they learn how to read in kinder? And first, yes, they do. But when we need to know, make sure that they understand the content and comprehend as they they get older, we want to make sure they're ready for anything they may take undertake. When they have to take a test, when they're going for any type of profession, they want to make sure that they're ready for content. And imagine learning, we want to make sure for our students, this is rich in vocabulary for many students that maybe not be practicing right now, language. And so we want to make sure that that's available so that they have that service. And along with a lot of others, online programs that are available on our website. So again, tonight I did want to share all the support programs that are available. Again, feel free to reach out to us, ask your schools. We're signing up now, all our students, and we're excited that we could bring this. But again, thanking everybody for giving us that feedback that this was much needed. And we thank our board and Mr. Martinez and all of Cabinet for bringing these programs to our community. Thank you, and I'm going to share one more item in regards to special education. So again, I wanted to share that we are now in regards to in-person assessments for students with disabilities. We have been given the green light that we can do that if a parent requests to do it. We have our case managers calling our parents right now and asking them, do you feel comfortable coming in and doing an in-person estimate assessment? Therefore, annuals, tri annuals, and we want to make sure that we make that available. Many parents feel that they don't don't want to do it right now. They want to wait. Know that we have our PPE materials in place. We have masks, gloves, facials for our students, facials for our teachers. We have all our sanitizing. We have our shields to make sure that everybody stays safe. That is our priority here in Pomona Unified School District, that our staff and students stay safe. We have sent out a letter to our parents explaining to them that we are, we we can do assessments now. And as you're getting those calls, you can let us know what is your preference and then we will schedule. They are open at all 41 sites. And so we'll be going through that as the next a few weeks. We've already started doing some assessments at some schools as parents have, you know. Let us know that they do want to come in. And then there's some parents that have said, we'll wait. So again, this letter on it should be detailing and it's available in English and Spanish. If you have any questions, please let us know and we can answer those. So again, thank you so much for joining us today. I hope we were able to share valuable information, but feel free to ask us any questions in the question and answer. We will be here for that.
Thank you, Mrs. Fuentes. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Principi for our secondary update.
Thank you so much and good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for joining us. It's always nice to meet with parents and community. Two things I just wanted to update on you real quick. Our semester for secondary schools ended October 9th. We did start a new semester yesterday with periods four, five and six. Grades are due, teachers had to today to complete them and they should be mailed home anywhere towards the end of the week or beginning of next week. You should be receiving them. So make sure you're looking for report cards and grades. And if not, please contact your school sites and we can help get those to you. They will also be on Parent Connect, so you can take advantage of logging into Parent Connect and seeing your child's grades. The second thing is, is we're very excited as we start to bring groups back. We are also bringing back certain sports and athletics and cheerleading at the high school level, starting October 19th. We will be following all of the safety precautions outlined, but we're excited to start having kids come back on campus and start exercising their bodies as well as their minds. So thank you again, and if you have any questions, please feel feel free to reach out to my office.
Thank you very much. To our health services, our Director for Health and Wellness, Dr. Mark Mayne, and also our District COVID Compliance Officer, Mrs. Shirley Martinez, who is one of our treasured retired principals from Alcott Elementary.
Good afternoon, parents and community. Thank you for tuning in tonight. We we want to let you know that our presentation is going to center around some of the updates regarding our reopening planning, our protocols. And a focus area that's particularly important is contact tracing. So I'm going to turn it over to Shirley Martinez, who's our District COVID-19 Compliance Officer, and she'll take us through the slides. So let me share my screen real quick. And here we go.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Yes, as Monica and Mrs. Fuentes are talking about people coming back on to our school sites. It's important for us to to know that if and when we we have cases. That occur COVID-19. There we go.
There we go.
We have some particular protocols that we need to go through. So a lot of the questions that we're receiving are, how does contact tracing work? So contact tracing is very simple and it is a confidential process. It's a little time consuming, but we I have a team that will be working with us to make sure that we're following all the guidelines from the Department of Health. These are some of the questions or the information that you'll be receiving if and only if you have a COVID-19 case. So what we would do is we would ask you to stay home and away from others to prevent the spread. The Public Health Department will be contacting you because we have to, if we have a positive case, we have to notify them. And they will be contacting you to for follow up. And it is important for you to take this call. The public health will ask about the places you have been. They'll also ask about the people that you have been with. And the people you tell us about will be contacted, but will not be told your name or contact information. They will also be asked to stay home to help prevent others from being sick. The contact tracing will also include. That you remain home for those 14 days after your last contact with the person who had COVID-19. So if you don't have a case, but you're you are in close contact, they're going to ask you to isolate in or quarantine yourself. So you'll remain home for those 14 days. The also, the Public Health Department will call you to follow up, and it is important to take this call as well. The Public Health will ask you if you are experiencing any symptoms or if you have been tested. And they will tell you about places that you may ask you about places that you may have been. So in order to avoid you being mixed up with anyone, and I always bring this up as because when I came into the school district, there were three Shirley Martinez's. So we would always want to make sure that that the one that has been had contact or the one that has COVID is the one that we're identifying. So it's really, really important for you to give us, give them your complete and correct information. They may call you more than once to check on how you're doing in your 14 days at home. And they will provide you with information on next steps based on your responses. And we will as well at the school sites, if something comes up, we have a stay at home information and it gives you all those guidelines. We're providing the schools with places where they can send you for testing if that's needed and put you in contact with a healthcare provider. And they will provide you with information on how to access those services, like testing for COVID. Or how to find a doctor if you don't already have one. So these are the basic elements of contact tracing. Everything is kept totally confidential. We have liaisons at every single school who report to me if something comes up. And then I in turn report to our Human Resources Department. So thank you for your attention. And if you have any questions about contact tracing or any of the back just returning to school protocols, please contact us.
Thank you, Shirley. And just real briefly, we are really encouraging as Mr. Hickey shared, good nutrition practices for students and families, everybody. Getting that good, good meal, eating, getting your sleep, exercising whenever possible. Those are really important things to prevent the COVID and other viruses from taking hold. And we also want to encourage folks to consider getting a flu vaccine this year. And we're going to be having flu vaccination clinics on Wednesday mornings from nine to 12, starting next Wednesday, the 21st. Then on Wednesday, the 28th, and then on Wednesday, November the 4th. These are free vaccination clinics. It's a partnership with Kaiser Permanente, Los Angeles County Department of Public Health and Health Services. Our first event will be held at Ganisha High School in the parking lot. It's a drive-through model. The information is available online and thanks to Mr. Hickey, we've been able to partner with him and begin to distribute flyers and consent forms. It's important, we've had a couple of folks ask questions about the consent form, the same consent form is the for the student, the parent, the staff member, anybody who shows up in a car, they're going to provide a vaccine. The most folks are going to be eligible for the flu mist vaccine, which is from ages two to 49 years old. It is an attenuated vaccine, which means it's live vaccine. It takes about three days, they say, for immunity to kick in versus two weeks for the shot. And what they are saying, some research is pointing that it may provide some protection against COVID. That was based on an NPR article and some research that was done. So we're hopeful that you participate in this program. There's also an event this Saturday at Fairplex. The information has been posted on the PUSD social media as well as the PUSD website. That's going to be, I believe, gate 17 at Fairplex on Saturday morning, the 17th. But we hope you will consider getting that. And we continue to work with the team to ensure the safety of both students and staff so that when we do return to school, we'll be ready. One, one thing I just want to give an update tomorrow, Los Angeles County Public Health will be updating its guidance based on the California Department of Public Health. Allowing families from multiple homes, up to three homes to come together. So we'll be monitoring that and be working with Shirley and the team to incorporate those changes and communicate those out through the community. What we do want to do though is consider wearing that mask, maintaining that six feet of social distancing, of hand washing, as Mr. Martinez said in his printing comments. And staying away from crowded places, confined spaces and close contact. We got to keep that six feet or two meters or more distance to protect ourselves. And it's no joke, it works. That's what our best prevention is right now. And so we are encouraging that. And as you know, you may have heard, Beverly Hills has banned trick or treating. But Los Angeles County Department of Public Health is just discouraging traditional door trick or treating. And they're encouraging alternative ways to celebrate the holiday. So we want to share that message and wish you a wonderful and safe evening. And I understand the Dodgers are are still winning, is that right? Thank you very much, Dr. Waxherper.
Thank you, Dr. May. I'd like to now go to our Assistant Superintendent for Facilities Maintenance and Operations, Mr. Fernando Mesa.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to join you tonight and share some information with you about what we're doing in our schools. We have spent the this whole time going through every single classroom, cleaning and disinfecting in preparation for the good return of your children to our school sites. We are putting forward different devices and items to make sure that students have plenty of opportunities to disinfect their hands, sanitize their hands. Behind me, you'll see some of the portable hand sanitizers that we'll be having throughout the campuses. All the restrooms have been worked on to make sure that all the sinks are are functioning. That they're fully stocked with soap and paper towels so that children can go ahead and again, wash their hands. That is the best protection in addition. That is the best protection in addition to the mask that everyone is going to be required to wear. So please remember, as you visit our campuses, make sure you have your mask on. Okay? And if you are not able to have a mask on, we will provide one for you. So that will be available for any student or visitor that comes onto the campus. It'll be part of the screening that you'll go through prior to walking onto the campus. We want to make sure that all of our students and our staff are safe as they conduct the education business on the campus. For those students that cannot wear a mask, we have accommodations as well. We have face shields for them. There will be gloves available as well for the staff to be able to use. And we are using approved, EPA-approved, CDE-approved cleaners to make sure that it kills whatever viruses or bacteria are on any of the surfaces that our students touch. The custodians will be spending most of the day wiping down and disinfecting all high-touch point areas on the campus. That includes the railings, the doorknobs, the light switches, countertops, anywhere where most people frequent. In addition to making sure that the restrooms are clean and fully stocked. So again, it's to make sure that everyone is safe on the campus. We've also made sure that all of our air conditioning systems have been reviewed and revised. The filters have been changed, and we're making sure that everything is working properly to ensure maximum airflow onto the campuses. Windows and doors are also being encouraged to remain open in the classrooms to allow more fresh air to be going in through the classrooms. So we're taking multiple steps, again, to ensure that your children are safe. We will also be installing, and we're going to, remember, it's 41 school sites, we are installing desk partitions. So every desk will have a partition, a barrier in front of them to keep the students safe as they attend classes when they return. Again, MNO and facilities are doing their part to make sure all of us are safe and are being able to continue and learn in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mesa. Just as we turn to the question and answer section, I'd like to invite our Deputy Superintendent, Mr. Darren Knowles, to share a few words. Thank you for being here.
Thanks, Dr. Waxhopper. Appreciate you. First of all, I want to thank everybody for attending today. As Dr. Pearlman said earlier, this has been a stressful time for many of us, many of our families and our employees. And so I want to thank you for all that you do. And I also want to encourage you, when you get a chance, say thank you to, you know, the teachers out there. I know you guys have been helping as well online with our kids and helping secure tutoring services for them and get them help. But, you know, when you get a chance, thank the teachers, thank a classified employee. You know, they do this job because they love it, but they also, you know, sometimes having somebody say thank you is important. And at the same time, we want to thank you guys for all of your support and all of your hard work. In Human Resources, we continue to recruit. We've moved our interviewing process. It's all online. We do our interviews via Zoom. We run our panels via Zoom. We still have some vacancies in the district. So if you know of somebody that's looking for a job or they want to work for a school district, we have some teaching positions open. We have par educator, we have college tutors. We have some security, campus security positions open as well. So if you're interested, reach out to us. You can reach us via the website, go to the Human Resources page, and give us a call. And if you have questions on how to navigate the system in terms of the application process, we'd be glad to help you. And again, you guys have a great evening, and thank you for joining us.
Thank you so much, Mr. Knowles. So we'll start with the questions that we have in the queue. And the first one has to do with, I think this is best for Mrs. Fuentes. In terms of the tutoring services and resources that were shared, much appreciated. The follow-up question is, how does a parent access a particular resource, whether it's through the school site or a link on the website? That would be the question.
It would be through the school site. All the principals have participated in all the meetings with our partners, and so they have all the information on that. And in regards to the homework club that Dr. Pearlman mentioned with the Pomona Library Foundation, that is just going on our website. There is a link in the school's library page that they can sign up under TutorFly and sign up for an appointment, and they can get help for their students.
Thank you very much. Our next question is for Mr. Hickey. It has to do with the information you shared regarding the Saturday breakfasts that are added to the Friday distribution. Is there any additional information or plans for weekend meals, for example, Saturday and Sunday?
What we have in place right now is Monday through Friday, breakfast and lunch. We are limited on what we're allowed and able to do. So Monday through Friday, everyone will get a breakfast and a lunch. On Friday, the only thing will be on Friday, they get a breakfast and lunch for that Friday. We'll also get an additional group of items to cover Saturday breakfast. So it's not just extra stuff for Friday, but it's actually designed to be consumed Saturday breakfast. We are looking to add some additional items as some extra giveaways. I'm not in a position really to announce anything, only because we're still waiting for things to come in. We've been working with some other distribution vendors and some partners. So we're looking forward to have some things come in. So it would be kind of some fun, exciting, extra special things that we'll be able to distribute. Going back to the summer, some of our participants might have been able to receive. We actually handed out some extra boxes of things like frozen shredded cheese and some pork patties and things like that. And so we've got some other fun things that are coming down. So I'm really looking forward to November. So my goal is to make sure that everybody's taken care of, and as much as possible, just continue to support the kids and the families as well.
So as we get additional updates regarding food services, we'll make that available to our principals so they can send out remind notices, and then families will be up to date with the additional services. So thank you for that. Mrs. Fuentes, a question regarding appreciating all of the resources. Is there anything that's specifically designed more for that TK Kinder group?
You know, the library is for those students TK to 4th grade, TK 6th grade. So if for any reason that you can't have any services at your school, you can always access the library page at your school site and make an appointment to help those TK and K students through the Library Foundation. They have tutors ready to help our students.
Thank you very much. And I think it was just also clarifying, I think a parent was under the understanding that there wasn't tutoring for the kinder age through the school site or another resource. I think it's just important, and thank you for clarifying that. Another question regarding our littlest ones is with our students in Head Start who sometimes are using parent devices as they're available to access the online services. And is there a plan or a way for those students to have Chromebook devices?
I know preschool has been working to try to get those devices in our students' preschools' hands. If you could give us a little bit more information of giving us your information, we could follow up and find that out. Again, we're trying to make sure that even our littlest ones have devices in their hands.
So I'm going to ask the parent that asked that particular question as opposed to putting your information in the public queue, if you could either contact us directly at the district office, they can route your call to People and Community Services, or you can contact our Child Development Office directly. That would be the best way for us to get your contact information that still will keep it confidential. So please do that so that we can follow up with you. Let's see. As far as the tutoring support and students with disabilities, Mrs. Fuentes, is it better for parents to contact their child's teacher regarding that support? Or is there another avenue to get access to that?
That would be the best thing because of the individualized education plan that is set for our students with disabilities. We want to make sure whatever the support they may need follows those guidelines. So if they could please contact their teacher or program administrator.
Thank you very much. The next question has to do with student motivation. There's a concern that some of our students aren't logging in. They're disconnected at this time. And so the question is, how do we, in terms of our support staff, our counselors, resource staff, how do we support those students to get them engaged with distance learning? And I'm sending that back to you, Mrs. Fuentes. Or to Mrs. Fuentes.
No problem.
I'm sorry, they didn't specify a grade level, so it may be something to talk about at elementary as well as secondary.
Yeah. So, and Ms. Principi could chime in with me. We've been working on making sure that we have constant contact with our families, trying to ensure why maybe they may not be logging in. So again, everybody's working together, counselors, principals, teachers, all our district office staff working to make sure that we can provide, because we also understand that some students may be working in the morning, maybe helping with childcare. There may be different reasons why they're not logging in. So we're trying to ensure that we provide other methods that they can access our educational program for them. So again, this is very much in the forefront that we've been discussing. In fact, we just left one meeting, we just finished a few minutes before, discussing that, and we are working on a plan to make sure that we engage all our students.
Thank you so much for that. Another question that came up regarding the parent survey that is being completed in our system. If a parent indicated on the survey that they would prefer distance learning, but at some point would really prefer to have their child back on campus, they just want to be assured that they have the option to make that adjustment, Mrs. Fuentes.
Yes. That survey, if you could please indicate, we realize that some parents will want to stay with distance learning. If you could just let us know that, that would be very beneficial. And also, the survey actually lists the school you're at. So it gives us that information so we know to make sure that we have the staff available to service all our students that need distance learning.
Thank you very much. And this one is for you, Mr. Martinez. It's a question about whether or not Pomona Unified has or will apply for a waiver to return students to campus.
Thank you. Great question, and I know it's been asked by a few parents and also teachers. It was our intention to apply for the waiver. What we learned from the county is they wouldn't be approving any of the waivers that came in. And the applications went out last Tuesday, I believe, Tuesday morning, for any school district that wanted to apply. The first group they anticipated the county to apply for the waiver were private schools because private schools don't have to have consultation with union groups, administrative groups, boards. So it's a little quicker to send an application through to the county. We would have to collaborate with the groups. So we are, we're talking to them. We believe we're going to move into a different tier faster than the county who may approve the first public school K-12 waiver. So we are working towards having our rooms ready and making sure they're safe and conducive for learning. And that's where Mr. Mesa, Dr. May, and Shirley Martinez, they're ensuring that all the things that are necessary to ensure that our kids and our staff are safe, then we will bring them back. Because at this point, the county also indicated that it wouldn't be until a couple of weeks from now that they would approve the first set of schools in the county. They would only be approving 30 schools, not 30 school districts, 30 schools in the county a week to start school, starting with the highest need. And the highest need was on free and reduced lunch count. So they're looking for those schools with the highest free and reduced lunch count. Based on 30 schools a week, and LA Unified be having 1,000-plus schools just in LA Unified. That's what we said, let's just focus on getting ready to when we move to the red tier from the purple tier, then we can get started. So it's a calculated decision to ensure that we're ready. Our staff are feeling very confident in what we've put for them, in front of them, and our families are feeling safe. That's been the focus, and we'll continue to be the focus here in the month of October and part of November to ensure everything is good to go for your children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. And I think along with the, there was more a comment than a question just to try to prioritize those students for whom the distance learning is a struggle as we consider the reopening and the students coming back on campus, that we, you know, look at those students as part of the group that needs assistance in an in-class format. Thank you for that. And then there's a question regarding, for Mr. Mesa, regarding the placement of the hand sanitizers, a question regarding whether we will have them also in the front of school as students and even parents are approaching so that they can have the opportunity to sanitize hands before coming on campus.
Very good question. And yes, we will have them at all the high-traffic points throughout the school to ensure multiple opportunities for families.
Thank you very much. A question probably for you, Mrs. Principi. It has to do with the stress of students in high school, particularly those AP classes, and how we can support students. I know that Mrs. Fuentes talked about the Princeton review, so maybe just to revisit that, as well as just talking about overall support for students who are just feeling a bit overwhelmed with the load and the responsibilities.
Absolutely. There are support, we have outside providers that are providing supports for our AP kids. We have the tutoring hours. The rest of the tutoring is not just for kids that are struggling. It could be for kids that are middle of the road. It could be for honors kids. It could be for any level kids. You could take avail of any of the tutoring programs that we have offered. There's also peer counselors at school, and we have peer counseling going on that your students can reach out to their school counselor. School counselors are also equipped to assist your student and guide them in their direction. As Mrs. Fuentes said earlier, we're also starting some sky breathing classes to help students deal with the stress and to learn ways to cope and to time manage. And the schools also have different programs that might be indigenous to that certain school. I know ASBs, the Associated Student Bodies of Schools, are running different programs that reach out for support and cohorts of kids to form study groups and support groups. So I think the best way is to contact your school, your principal, and/or me specifically. You can email me, and I can hook you up with different resources that you might need or desire.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Dr. May, a question regarding, I think, okay. Dr. May, a question regarding protocols for returning to school. If a student on campus tests positive for COVID and is under the quarantine, the 14-day, does that mean that if there are other students in that family, that all students are quarantined, even if those additional siblings have a negative test?
Yes. Generally speaking, we're probably going to consider them close contact. I mean, unless they've been, for some reason, separated, you know, which is going to be difficult. And as we know, testing, you can be tested this morning, test negative, and then be tested again in the evening and test, you know, test positive. So the testing piece is somewhat, you know, they're going to have to be in quarantine, and hopefully they won't develop COVID-19. I'm going to ask Shirley to share too. Shirley, that's my understanding of the process because it's such a close-contact setting.
Yes, as long as a student is in close contact, then they have to be quarantined as well. So for instance, if a student is in the classroom and they have tested or they have symptoms, then the other students that are in that classroom would also have that close contact. So we would have to, we would consult, of course, with the Department of Public Health, and they give us some really good guidelines on that. But if that child is in the home and you have siblings, I would say that they would have to have that same 14 days of quarantine.
And the sick child, to the ability, to the best of the ability in the home, should be isolated from the others. And public health, of course, encourages to have their own bathroom and keep that separation as much as possible. It's not easy. Thank you.
And is a negative test required for that student to return back to school after the 14-day period?
That's a good question. Certainly, if they haven't developed symptoms within the quarantine period, most likely, they're not infectious with COVID-19. The student, the child with COVID-19, there's 10 days from the onset and then 24 hours free of fever, without fever-reducing medication. So we would want to take each case, case by case, to determine when a child might have been exposed. But that's a really good question, and that's one that I think we would consult with public health on because they're going to be able to help better assess the situation. And that contact tracing that we talked about, that's And that contact tracing that we talked about, that's, that's how that, that really works. That's the really key component to helping us determine next steps.
Thank you very much, Dr. Maine. Several questions in the queue that have to do with when we decide or how we decide to return back to school. I don't know who'd like to take that one.
So that would.
Go ahead, Mr. Martinez, yes.
All right, Dr. Watts Harper. It was a discussion we were having in cabinet. It's a discussion I have with the board members often. We want to start as recommended by the county. We don't really have much flexibility. So as far as who starts first and when we start, we wait for Department of Public Health to provide LA County Office of Education and 80 other districts guidance on if we could start. Once they give us the blessing that we could start, once we move into another tier or we file for a waiver, again, they tell us exactly who gets to start first. TK 12 has been very clear, that's where they want us to start. And then we can move it up to the upper grades and move it up to the secondary level. And they would tell us when those, those times, those thresholds would occur. So there isn't much of a decision or a choice. We do get to decide now if we could bring back certain students. For instance, I think Dr., Ms. Lilia Fuentes mentioned about assessment. We could bring students in special ed back for assessment and that will begin very, very soon in our system. And so that's something that we'll be able to do for a special needs population of all grade levels. Again, they wouldn't be coming in on a daily basis. They would be coming in for assessment to complete that. We could also bring in students up to 10% in, of a campus. For instance, if there are 300 students in a campus, we could bring 30 at a time in small cohorts of no larger than 12 students, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, staff, 12 students and two adults in a space. And those cohorts would have to remain the same with the same support staff, if it's a teacher and a classified support. And that could happen too as quickly as now. They're giving us the opportunity. That's one thing we're assessing at this point. If we're going to continue on this stage, which ones would we bring back first? Because there, they're going to give us latitude, but they've also indicated your special ed population, your English language learners, those most vulnerable students, that's what they're asking us to support first. And that's the, again, these small cohorts that we could bring in. But again, our guidance is from the county, Department of Public Health, and the latitude and the wiggle room is minimal that school districts can do. So we're, we're thinking Dr. Ferrer. I think some of you follow her religiously at 1 o'clock in the afternoon every day. And we meet with her on Thursday mornings, every Thursday at 8:30. And then Dr. Maine gets to meet again, I think, Thursday afternoons at 4 o'clock or 3 o'clock. He gets another opportunity. He's want to make sure that folks in health services are totally aware of where we find ourselves. So I hope that answers that question. I know I wish it would be clearer than that, but that's the best I could do for you now.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. There's a question regarding if we are able to return in hybrid fashion for the second semester, will we switch back to the semester system periods 1 through 6 at secondary? Or will we stay with the schedule where we have 1, 2, 3, and then 4, 5, 6? And I'm not sure if that's yours, Mrs. Fuentes, or Mrs. Principi.
I think that's something that we need to still discuss a little bit. One that we've discussed it both ways, depending on what our advice comes from the CDE. We talked about going back to the six periods or, and/or staying at our three periods. And it's something that we would have to negotiate with our union as well.
Thank you very much for that. And, and also I think to clarify, Mrs. Fuentes, the information regarding the resources, the understanding is that students, the tutoring services, the Avid, all of the other resources that have been shared, National College, it isn't specific to students who are struggling learners only. This, the advanced students, students with additional interests can also take advantage of the services. I think it's just a need to clarify that.
Correct. Because sometimes it's maybe a concept that a student may not have grasped for a specific time. It could be exponents, it could be fractions, and they just need, you know, a review. Or it just may be a science concept that's a new one. They can go in and access, especially at the middle and high school. That's why we've left it open to 100 hours a month. So some of it could be drop-in. They can have that support service across the system.
Thank you for that. And I had a question regarding the, and I think this is, this is probably more specific to a site. It's from a secondary site, but it's regarding the amount of work that students are being required to complete and the, they stress that feeling that the amount is too much. My recommendation would be to reach out if the outreach has been made to the teacher and also to the site administrators so that we can address that issue.
Absolutely.
Anything else after that? Okay. So please, I'm not sure whose question it is, but please reach out to your child's teacher initially and then also to the principal if you still have concerns about the amount of work that students are being asked to do. And then I have a question regarding when we return. Many of our questions are with the caveat of when we return. Do we have a particular number of students per class? Or are we using the square footage of the classroom to determine the number? I don't know if that's yours, Mr. Mesa, or I'm not sure.
Yes. Right now, what we have been instructed by the county is no more than 14 students in the classroom. And that also depends on the types of classrooms we have. But on average, 14 students per classroom and no more than two adults in the, in the room as well. So that's the average that we'll be using.
Thank you, Mr. Mesa. I have another question that's related to what we had talked about previously regarding student engagement and students not wanting to log in or not wanting to stay engaged. And I do feel that, again, that is something that we need to address with the classroom teacher. A lot of the work we're doing in the district is reaching out to students that aren't engaging regularly, that have some challenges with the attendance. And so if you're a parent of a student who isn't logging in, who doesn't want to connect to the classroom, please let your child's teacher or send an email to the principal because we do want to connect. We have counseling support available, K-12. We have additional staff to support students. But we do want to hear from you so that we can provide the support. It is going to be individualized based on what the concern is with the student. But please let us know so that we can address that by student because it is a big concern for us and we want to be able to provide the support. I have a question also regarding the adult transition program. And is there any particular support for that, Mrs. Fuentes?
We could follow up on that. I know that we have not brought our students back. But I know that, again, the individualized education plan, we would need to make sure what services they may need particular to the student. So if they could provide or contact us, we can talk further on that question.
And I had a question regarding additional support. I had shared regarding students, parents reaching out to teachers and to site administration. And we're available as a resource as well at the district office. So please let us know. But we always ask the questions and the order is, what's been the conversation with the teacher? What has been the conversation with the site principal? And we're more than happy to assist in that process if needed. Any of us here, you see our first and last names. The email is always firstname dot lastname at P U S D dot org. So again, we do want to know and we want to continue to reach out and connect with you. I had a question about a live stream in the classes. I'm not quite sure what the question is specifically, but if you would email me with that so that I can connect with you and I can respond to that. I know that we do have live interaction during the day for instruction, but I want to be able to answer that specific question. And I'm just not quite sure that I understand the entire question. And I'm looking at the queue to make sure. That looks like everything that we've gotten this evening. I, again, I do want to stress, we had several questions about students not being engaged. And we encourage you to reach out to your school. Please let us know because we want to work with you to make sure that your child is engaged in learning. It is very critical. And again, we want to provide that support. At this time, I'd like to thank the members of the panel. And I would like to ask now our director, Mrs. Diana Raimondo, if she would give us a closing. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Watts Harper. We want to again say thank you to our parents and participants who joined us this evening and just let you know how much we appreciate all that you are doing to collaborate with us together. We can tell by the questions and the inquiries, things are changing at home and we're very happy to hear that. Parents, you should be very proud of what you are doing with your children. Working extremely hard, committed to the task. Know that we are here to help in any way possible. Always feel free to call on us. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve you and have a good night.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez, any closing? Just, I just want to make sure before we sign out.
Just a reminder and thank you, Ms. Maravell Raimondo for that. I appreciate your, your kind words at the end of our meetings. Just, just a reminder, you heard it from Dr. Mark Maine. We want to do everything we can to slow the spread of this COVID-19. We're entering this flu season. So I want to make sure that we're all participating, keeping each other safe. I also heard Dr. Maine say that there are flu shots and I believe I heard the word free. I think I heard the word free and that's really good. So please take advantage of these opportunities so that way it's a light flu season. The last thing I wanted to share with you is it is an election season. You have your ballots at your homes. They've been mailed to you. Exercise what we have been given, an opportunity to select our representatives at the national level, at the state level, at the local level. So please do that. And just as important, if you have not done your census, I believe it was extended through the end of October. So if you haven't done that, I won't say shame on you at all. It's been a crazy time, but you still have an opportunity. We want to be counted because our local areas, our communities, Pomona, depends on federal funding at all levels. And if we don't do the census, the funding will not follow. And that goes for 10 years, guys. So I want to make sure that our community gets what they are deserving of and that support from our federal level. And so thank you very much tonight for all you do. You'll be getting something in the next two weeks. We're going to start asking for your support. And that's a campaign to keep our community healthy. It's going to be with the mayor, myself, our local leaders, our government officials. We want to make sure that you can help us have a very mild flu season, ensuring that we don't have too much COVID-19 going on in the community of Pomona and Diamond Bar. So there's going to be an initiative. We're going to kick it off where business community or parent community or student community could be a part of this. And it's just following the simple steps you heard earlier from Ms. Martinez. So we're hoping that you'll be with us on those calls, when we do those Zoom calls. And we will also invite our senior leadership. And when I say seniors, I'm not talking about people like me. I'm talking about seniors in high school. So they are going to talk to you about why it's so important to stay healthy. Because our seniors in our high school want to return to school. And if we do real well with elementary students returning, guess what? They get to come and finish off their school year and they will share with you very compelling reasons through videos. And I'm looking forward to what they're going to share with us. That's about two weeks from now. So again, thank you, Dr. Watts Harper, for doing this today. And parents, thank you for attending.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
See you.